General cross board pay increases, they're in the contracts. We're not there yet. I'm not even sure we're at the step level yet. And that's true again, whether it's unions at the schools, or the unions for the non-school departments, or even dealing with our non-need-weighted personnel employees, let alone getting to a point where, for instance, we have a highway department that hasn't seen an increase in personnel since before I started in Halifax back in the last millennium. Well, we've added lots more streets since then. And there's probably definitely need for more highway personnel. But before we get to them, all those other things, we're gonna have to be looking at. So, I'm not speaking about any particular line item in your budget tonight. What I am saying is, don't feel it's rejection. In fact, the finance committee and the town meeting at some point says, "We can't afford this. Here's a number we can't afford." It's nothing to do with you personally. It's nothing to do with the school budget specifically. It's not to do even with the elementary school budget. It's simply where we're sitting right now. But we're probably seeing a lot of things that are new this year, and even possibly note a lot of things that we already have in our budgets right now. With that in mind, I'm hoping you'll take that into account when you're making your budget decisions during the next couple of months, and coming back and asking for the assessments from the three committees. Thanks.
Thank you, Sean.
Gordon Andrews, the Chair of the Halifax Finance Committee. When we've been talking about budgets, just follow what Charlie had to say. I agree with just about everything. He said, "When we look at your budget that was proposed, approximately a million dollars more than last year's budget, with state aid basically being cut by the charter school tuition costs and the reimbursement by about $60,000, you'll have had a million dollars more for this budget that's been presented." Just do math of, for the assessment, keeping everything the same as last year, Halifax is looking at roughly $300,000 increase. And there's no way that the town can afford that budget this year. So, that's where we are. I think if you get closer to 100, to 150, the town will be able to afford it. It's somehow that we can move numbers around. But I don't think anything more than 150 would be affordable.
Thank you, Gordon. Certainly, I just want to say one thing. The version of the budget that we've distributed in this municipal budget so far is still our working budget. It's not what's going before the town, unless that's what the committee decides. But we're still in the process of working through that budget. So, I always want to caution people that we go through different iterations, as you're fully aware of, and appreciate your feedback from the Halifax perspective, by all means.
Good evening. Carl Pike, Shore Drive, Kingston, resident and grandfather of children in the school system, Vice Chair of the Kingston Finance Committee. I'd like to emphasize, though, that I'm speaking as a citizen, not on behalf of the finance committee. Madam Chair, School Committee members, Madam Superintendent, and School Administrators, thank you for the opportunity to say a few words here. I personally believe that the schools are by far the most important function of local government. And I might add, I believe they're much more important than all other government functions' responsibilities. I think that people here recognize that I have been a staunch supporter of the Silver Lake Regional Schools District since I've been involved in the town here. I commend the school committee, School Administrators, and most important of all, the school teachers, for providing the youth of the Silver Lake District with quality educational opportunities. I have just a few thoughts concerning the high school and the middle school budgets. As we all know, unfortunately, resources for funding school budgets are in fact limited. I for one recognize the work that School Administrators and committees put in annually to develop budgets that maximize the usage of limited funds in providing the best education that we can for our youth. And now, just a few specific budget comments. The annual budget increase for Silver Lake over the last seven years, including the preliminary 4% requested for this year, has been 3.3%, which I consider as being generally reasonable. However, one must rhetorically ask if annual increases of 3.3% are really sustainable over the long run in times of extremely low inflation. And I also should probably note that the 4% requested this year equates to about a 6.5% increase in the assessments because of the reduced state aid and certain other revenue reductions. Over the same seven-year period, enrollment in grades 7 through 12 has declined by about 5%. I encourage all involved in the budget process to consider how continued declining enrollments will be reflected in future budgets. Another related issue to this, in my opinion, is the charter school enrollments. We all know the financial impact that charter school enrollments have on local school budgets. As a matter of fact, just yesterday, Boston announced a preliminary FY19 school budget of $1.1 billion. A 1.5% increase from the current budget. But the key point to me was that $215 million of Chapter 70 state aid will go to charter schools. That's almost all of the state aid that the city of Boston receives is going to charter schools. So, in fact, charter schools are a factor. However, I do not believe that local school officials have much control over how many district students choose charters over local schools. I for one think that these decisions are often irrational. Therefore, I believe that we all need to be proactive in not only working the funding issue with state officials, but also planning and budgeting for an increasing loss of students to charter schools. I think it's a fact of life going forward. I don't think it does any good to say, "Oh, charter schools are killing us, blah, blah, blah." It's something that we probably can't control. Therefore, we have to plan for it. Another specific item, medical insurance costs, continue to increase across the nation. We all know that. I believe that schools and all local government entities need to start considering medical costs as being a fixed cost, okay? We all need to be proactive in looking at ways to better control these costs, as has happened in industry. Are we offering too many plans? Are the plans offered too rich? Are there other carrier options? Should we be making it other group consolidation opportunities? I am hopeful that Kingston is about to create a committee in the near future to seriously work this medical insurance cost issue. I encourage Silver Lake to work with us. Special education costs in the Silver Lake Regional High School/Middle School Budget for next year is escalating at what I believe is an unsustainable rate. 318K, or 21% in the last two years. However, I'm not gonna talk about this much here because it's a much more significant issue at the Kingston local school level. But my only comment is that I have a genuine concern that special ed costs must be brought under control to prevent future negative impacts on the funding of the education for so-called regular students. And that means that we may not be able to always develop new programs for special ed. We may not be able to have Cadillac programs for special ed. I believe that's gonna be a fact of life in the future. My final comment may be more specific than some people like me to be. However, when I look at the preliminary budget that you are reviewing of $25,540,000, I believe that a reduction of approximately $400,000 is required, which is a 1.6% reduction, to begin to get us on the road to an annual sustainable budget that can be supported by the district residents and towns, while still providing the quality educational opportunities that we all desire for the youth of our three towns. Thank you, and again, I respect and admire what you all do for the next generation, that generation which will make up the next great leaders of our time. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public? Seeing none.
Mr. Paul. Hi, Mary McKinnon from the Town of Kingston Finance Committee. Unfortunately, Gordon, I missed your comments about Carl. I thank you for speaking on behalf of a number of residents for the Town of Kingston. And I support and echo Carl's statements. I would like to also thank the committee and the administration for being stewards of our school system. I see that we've got a group of students here gathered this evening. I'm looking forward to whatever presentation they have. Those are always enjoyable. And we remind ourselves each time that we're here that we are here for education. But as stewards of the school committee and of the school district, we too have chosen to take on roles, respective roles in our communities as members of the finance committee. And as you can imagine, we all take our jobs very seriously. And it's not easy. Building a budget is a very difficult process. I think you've heard some of the concerns from some of the communities. I would just like to remind you that there are no unlimited resources, as we all know. From the Town of Kingston's perspective, I'll just give you a couple of hard and fast numbers, especially for our Kingston representatives to be aware of. The ability to raise revenue at the local level to support programs like our school department are limited by the revenue that we can generate and taxes that we can raise. So, when it comes to taxes and our ability to raise property taxes, Kingston's growth is limited to $1.2 million for the entire budget. So, that's $800,000 in 2.5% allowable growth and approximately $400,000 for new growth. That $1.2 million is trying to be stretched to the tune of almost $3 million. So, we have requests from the local school level of an increase of $1.1 million. We have a request that we're projecting here of about $650,000. And that doesn't even include any of the town departments that have already requested increases of over $900,000. So, we are in a clear predicament. And I just wanted to share those numbers with you so that you can quantify and understand the problems that we face. I would hope that through the course of the conversations this evening, that we would be afforded the opportunity to ask some questions as you present some information and be able to have an open and spirited dialogue with the committee. But again, we look forward to working with you and we look forward to crafting what we all hope is a sustainable budget to support our education system. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience? Seeing none. Thank you all for your feedback. It's important to us. At this point, does any committee member want to make any comment? We're certainly gonna have a budget discussion a little bit later this evening. But does anybody want to make a comment at this point? Okay, we have a little sidebar down there. Nothing? Okay. Seeing none. Reorganization. We have, obviously, our beloved Jim.
We need to close the public budget hearing.
Okay.
I'd love to close the public budget hearing for Silver Lake.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay. We do have a reorganization necessary. Obviously, Jim, loved us last month. The vice chair position is available, and I'd like to see the nominations for that position.
I nominate Eric Cullen for the vice chairmanship.
A second.
Are there any other nominations for that position? Seeing none? All those in favor of Eric? Aye?
Aye.
Foes, abstained? Excellent. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're not gonna move into the Jimsey board?
Oh, yes.
Did we ask Eric? Yes, that I just, I did think of this. All righty. Students, we have a group of students tonight. I think the skill, we are very curious. I saw some mechanical things as I was walking around. So, I'm very curious what's going on.
Great, well, I'm excited to introduce you. We have three of our staff members here tonight, Mr. Gregory, Mr. Ruda, and Mr. Mello, and students who are in our robotics program. And I'm really excited for them to share some of the hard work that they've been doing and to really highlight what it is they do. You know, I feel like robotics has become sort of a buzzword in education, but it's so in-depth and it's so involved and it's beyond, I think, what any of us can really imagine. And the brains of these students, the brain power is just fascinating. So, I'm gonna turn it over to you guys. So, thank you for being here.
Hello. So, we're here from the three robotics teams that we have here at the high school. One hosted by, or coached by each of the three teachers that we have behind us here. So, these are the three teams and the technical numbers of them and then the names we have for them. So, the team hosted by Mr. Gregory is the SilverBots. And then, Mr. Mello is SilverSheep. And Ruda's SilverSheep, and Mr. Mello is the LakerBots. Okay, oh, that cut off. These are the members of the team of Mr. Gregory. We have, I just wanna introduce the people that are here today. So, hi, I'm Nick Asmus. I'm a junior.
I'm Greg Motul. I'm sophomore.
I'm Connor Hawn. I'm a freshman.
I'm Jake Neenan. I'm a senior.
Ethan Wilbeck. I'm a junior.
Will Doachma. I'm a senior.
I'm Karen Ho. I'm a senior.
I'm Steven Lill. I'm a senior.
I'm Therrya Winston. Senior.
Okay, so, this is just a little bit about what we do. So, every year, the company that we use for competitions, it's First Robotics. So, they present a challenge to be competed in for robotics teams across the state. And you have to build a robot from scratch and design it completely independently for the purpose of competing in this.
And we say that it's done completely independently. And the reason there's an asterisk there is because there's actually a lot of collaboration that goes on at the competitions. Like, my job was to program the whole thing, but I got a lot of help from other teams at the competitions. And I'm sure the same goes for the construction of robots as well.
And within each team, we divide up into groups to complete different tasks. And each Monday, we have an all-team meeting with all three teams here at the high school to talk about what we had accomplished throughout the week and what we could maybe do better. And then, at the end of each day, we're then our individual teams to talk about it, to reconvene with the different groups that are happening at the same time. Okay, so this year, the competition was called the First Relic Recovery Competition. And in this, this is a picture of what the playing field looks like, published by First. So, this is a point we pull up. There are lots of things that we have here. So, we have these foam blocks, which are centered in the middle. And the goal, you also have these plastic, what we call relics, in the corners of the field. And there are wiffle balls here. And each of those scores points in a different way throughout the competition. And you need to score those points in order to win the competition. Okay, so this is just a little bit about our designing. So, the first thing we did was we saw these foam blocks on our team. And we decided that it would be a good idea to use a sort of, base it off of a forklift to pick up these blocks. And our first real robot was, the first one we built was based off this design. But as we moved on, we realized if we wanted to, we placed second place at our last competition, but we realized that if we wanted to be able to realistically compete at states, nationals, even the world competition, we would have to completely redesign the robot. So, that's what we've been working on for the last month or so. So, at each competition, there are three parts. The first part, when you get there, you are judged and interviewed by around, between three and five judges at the competition. And they ask you about your design, the design of your robot and the programming of it. They stress even more how the process you took to get there and how you influenced your community throughout this process. So, that's a huge part of every competition. And then, there are qualifying matches in which you're paired up with another team and compete against a set of two other teams. And at the end of these around 20 to 30 qualifying matches, the finals begin. So, this is us at our last competition, where we placed number two. We, the top four teams, select another team to be their alliance partner and work together with. So, before we get to the slide, I just wanna stress something about the competition that I may have skipped over earlier, which is that when you get there, gig-tucked on a little bit, is that you really do work together with the other teams there. At our first competition, we were missing an essential part that we didn't know we needed to have. And we were scrambling through the environment of 20 to 30 other robotics teams. And we just were asking for someone to help us out with this part. And another team donated it to us and had it. I mean, you really work together with all teams throughout the whole state, throughout the series of these competitions.
Yes, one of the big elements of FIRST is called gracious professionalism. And it's the idea that you are there to compete and to compete against each other, but you're also there to help each other and to grow from your experiences with each other. And through our collaborations, we learn new things and we gain new friends. And we develop as engineers and students, as well as individuals. And the idea first is it stands for inspiration and recognition of science and technology. So, we go there to do things like robotics and to learn about engineering and all of that. But we also learn teamwork and leadership. And we learn to work together and collaborate to develop ideas into real-life products. And that's the amazing thing about FIRST. It brings younger kids together and it connects all of us on a level that I think a lot of us can see the results of.
So, one of the things that we all enjoy about FIRST and enjoy with the robotics teams is we're given a task and a challenge. And we spend multiple days just thinking of ideas and drawing one on paper. And then, you're able to see that drawing you put on paper come to life as you spend the next month, or two months, building it and getting parts and putting everything together. And you, your envision that you came up with in your head, you're able to see it come alive. And that's one of the best things of the First Robotics Competition and being on a robotics team for generations.
Absolutely. I mean, they announce the competition for each year at the end of August or beginning of September. And it's usually before the school year begins. And we just, we meet up usually at the school and we just brainstorm ideas. And it's so fascinating to just see something that you drew out on a piece of paper and came up with in your head come to life and compete and even potentially win at a competition. It's just like mind-boggling to see happen.
And just sort of as a, robotics is a growing industry, as many of you know. So, this really does give us a great opportunity to develop and then grow skills that could influence us later in life because of robotics and things like that.
That's about all we have, right? So, thank you for your time. Is there any questions or anything anyone has about this?
I would just like to say, I'm a software engineer. I do a lot of coding. And whether you guys stick with technology and become engineers or not, even if you go and become, let's say, a plumber or a mechanic or a lawyer or a doctor, it doesn't matter, all the stuff that you guys are learning here, problem solving, you know, you're given a problem, like you guys said, and you're coming up with a solution. And that is such a great experience, no matter what you do. So, I mean, if there's anybody, you know, in the school students who just feel like they're, well, they're not quite good at programming, it's such a great thing because it will help you, like I said, with your problem solving. And as you guys have probably noticed, each of you probably brings a different skill or specialty to getting the job done. So, what you're learning now and what you're doing is you're gonna be light years ahead of a lot of your peers when you get to college. So, you know, congratulations. You know, you guys are all doing great and you're learning great things. Like I said, regardless of what you study in college and do for the rest of your life. So, congrats. Great job.
And that's actually something I've noticed. Like, I joined robotics as a freshman. And I will admit that I did not know what I was doing. But I'm a senior this year, and I'm a team captain and the team manager. And I actually, as a freshman, I did not like engineering at all. But this year, I actually applied for the robotics independent study in engineering, which I never would have seen myself doing as a freshman. But I learned a lot. And even if you start slow, like, I learned how to draw the 3D parts in CAD to get them printed on the 3D printer. And like, I started with drawing an emoji face. And now, I can do all of these things. So, it starts really slow, but then you get over and you can really do some amazing things. And the things that I've learned as a team manager, I will carry with me for like the rest of my life. I've even been like applying them for my science fair project. Like, it's a lot of time management and self-discipline and self-motivation. And those are things that I will carry with me for the rest of my life and that I hope that all of my team members have gained from our experiences as well.
Thank you.
Yes, let's turn them on. I'm sure they're on.
So, we're gonna do basically a brief demonstration of each robot on its own. And the people on the team are gonna give like brief synopsis of their plan with that robot and why the design is for it. So, Will actually go first. Nick is our designated driver. So, this is the new design of our robot that we've been working on here. So, there are four wheels in the front there that will essentially intake the foam block here. And there's a conveyor belt that will bring it up to the top onto this ramp, which will flip it into the box where it needs to end up. And there's a color sensor right here, which happens autonomously during the competition to detect the color of a wiffle ball and hit it off of a platform if it's the right color.
Can you brush the car that one?
I hope so.
I'm representing one of Mr. Mello's groups. As we've probably stressed enough, it encourages problem solving. And we went with a more unique and versatile option. It didn't work as well as we hoped. Still taught us a lot to learn. We used a lot of PR ratios. I was the head programmer. We worked together. I was on one of the smaller teams. With this claw, we wanted to interact with the scoring elements of the game. This is a field game. The specifics were mentioned. Oh, you're letting me go with it?
No, I'm just saying. I left one of them.
So, our robot is named Waffles. And yeah, we're adorable that way. Yeah, and so, we decided to utilize linear slides both vertically and horizontally so that the arm of the robot can move both vertically and horizontally in as soon as way as possible, which allows us to reach in staff in that cubic formation for the competition. Our robot's built as a slant because one of the parts of the competition is to end up on top of a balancing plate. And by tilting our robot, we throw our center of mass off just a little bit. And then, we had to correct for that, building vertically so that we did still build horizontal to the, correct, and by 3D printing parts. And 3D printing was actually a really big part of the process of our robot. And at competition, one of the awards is called the Design Award. And it's an award that honors both the aesthetics and the structure and function of a robot's unique structure. And so, we brought home this wonderful design award. So, as we 3D printed, we went through a lot of Mr. Ruda's PLA. We apologize. But so, everything blew. We thought we were done. And clearly, we were not. So, we went through several different various...
Department of Education oversees what we used to refer to as the coordinated program review. It's now a monitoring tiered system. But old habits die hard. So, when communicating to people in education... Succeeds Act, and one of the requirements of this act is to identify disparities that result in historically disadvantaged students being placed in groups that are being taught at higher rates than other students by lower-rated or inexperienced or out-of-field teachers. And so the state now has a report called the Student Learning Experience Report, and it will help us as a district to identify equity gaps in the district, in schools, and to develop an equity plan and strategies to address the gaps if, in fact, these types of students are being placed at a higher rate and need improvement teachers and experienced teachers or out-of-field teachers. At this time, we do not have, we've examined the data, and we do not have any of our schools in that position. However, the data is from last year, and so we're going to be talking with our principals in terms of what our current data may be in attempts to make sure that that is not an issue for us in the future. Department heads and curriculum leaders will be attending a workshop on creating differentiation in inclusive classrooms in May, and this opportunity was made possible by a Title IV grant. And then Maury and I will be attending the Department of Education's Leading Educational Access Project, or LEAP, on March 16th, and the focus of the convening will be to promote educational access and equity to all students. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can.
So to MCAS for any high school now, so you said twenty-five percent of students will be taking the next-generation MCAS, correct?
As a field test.
So here's my question. So the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship requires that you get advanced in either biochem, physics, or engineering, and then proficient in the other two, then score in the top twenty-five percent of your school. So if you've got twenty-five percent of the kids taking the class where kids aren't doing it, but where they were advanced in MCAS, and now they're just, they're down in this new test, how does that affect that scholarship? And then is that fair? If the twenty-five percent who are taking it do, aren't going to be in advanced?
It's my understanding that this does not have an impact on the John and Abigail's Act, John and Abi- John and Abigail's, thank you, scholarship. I'm going to also ask Principal Gill if she has heard otherwise, but my understanding is that this is completely separate in addition to the traditional testing.
But it prevents them from being able to, oh, don't take all tests?
Yes.
This is a trial.
They're very lucky. Yes, so it should, my understanding, it has no impact on that, but it does put an additional burden on the students who are randomly selected.
Is it a certain subject matter that Silver Lake has to cover?
So-
Is it ELAs, is it math?
All of the above.
Oh, yes, all of them, okay, thank you.
Any other questions now? All right, thank you, Jill. All righty, superintendent, and actually, before Joy begins, if you don't mind, I'm actually thrilled to share with everybody that Joy is the recipient of the Massachusetts School Library Association Administrative Advocate Award, which is a very substantial honor. And what I'd like to do is just read a snippet of her award announcement. It is our privilege to inform you that you are this year's recipient of the Massachusetts School Library Association Administrative Advocate Award. This award honors administrators who have made significant contributions to the promotion of effective school library programs and services. It recognizes the responsible and influential role of the school administrator in developing successful school library programs within their own school district that influence communities at large. We believe that your work at Silver Lake Regional School District serves as an exemplary for support of school library programs. And Joy, throughout your entire tenure here, you've always periodically reminded us of how important libraries are and how valued they are from your perspective, and maybe, perhaps, made us all kind of rethink and realize again that libraries are so important in the lives of our children. And I just wanted, along with the fellow committee members in the audience, thank, applaud you for that. All right, now what I've got to do is find some funding to keep all the programs and so on, like, okay. So I know this is what all of you came for and are looking forward to. So this is our assessment presentation, and again, this is based on version one of the budget, okay? So at the end of this presentation, I do have a little bit of good news, but it's happened since version one has been done, will impact and will already sound successful. First slide, this goes over the middle school and high school mission statements. I believe everybody has a hard copy, and just in the essence of time, I won't go through and read the mission statement. But again, it stands to reason that our focus remains on students and to provide all the best programs that are possible and to help our students meet with success and to become productive members of society. Our budget guiding principles, we have really worked very hard, and Jill even does refer to it.
So I tried to use a lot of estimates here, worst-case scenario, best-case scenario. So the two twenty-five is, I'd say, probably ninety percent, if everything went perfectly during the year, what we would earn. So that could be another $20,000.
So are you saying that for FY18, you're expecting to exceed the estimate by approximately $20,000?
Approximately, if nothing else changes between now and June.
On the Pembroke Insurance, can you refresh my memory? This is us being reimbursed for the cost of health insurance for folks?
In 2000 and fall, when Pembroke, we separated with Pembroke, there were students, I'm sorry, there were retirees on our list of folks getting insurance.
Okay.
At a fifty-fifty split. Pembroke, as part of the agreement, owns forty-two percent of that. So every month, we go through that list, and we have to do it because people pass away and things happen. So we bill it every single month based on that current list, and that number has decreased since we started back a few years ago. So we're collecting approximately $11,000 a month right now, but that could change tomorrow, and I wouldn't have any notice on that.
And it's a watch, too, right, Priscilla? Because whatever you collect is the extent of which, so it's really- Well, the reason I was asking was that last year, my notes had it budgeted, the estimate was $138,000. Now it's down to $120,000, and we know that the cost of insurance, as we've all been talking about, has been dramatically increasing, so I was trying to get my head around the significant reduction.
The retiree plans are less costly, and they seem to, they've had some rate decreases, actually, haven't they?
So those are specifically on the rate saver plans?
No, no, retirees, their plans have been revamped.
There's something called MedX3, which was a much more all-encompassing plan, which was more expensive. Mayflower moved down to MedX2, which still provides the services, but ended up being a less expensive plan, is tied into federal Medicare rates and such. So that, there were two factors, I think, going on, or three, you can almost say. One is the general medical inflation. Two is, we did go from MedX3 to MedX2, which was a drop. But also, slowly, we're losing people off the list because they're no longer-
In need of insurance.
Yes.
Quick question on the bond refunding that we did a couple of years ago. Was there a premium that the district received?
I would have to go back and look. You know, it's kind of funny, I've kind of tucked all that back away in the drawer. It's moved on and we're, it's helping us. I would have to get back to you on that.
Okay, I'd like to know that.
I don't remember off the top of my head.
There's so much.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, folks, where do we want to go from here? We have two distinct things. We have, you know, our capital plan, which is we're proposing E and D funding. That's different than our operating budget. So I don't know what, I think my personal preference would be to start a discussion about our everyday budget and hold this one aside at least for a little while this evening.
Do you think to go through the next safer meeting before?
Yes, absolutely, but I don't know if anybody has thoughts around it. I mean, that's what we're here for tonight, but agreed, completely agreed. Having said that, where do we want to begin? What about, philosophically, or at a high level, what about those? I'm just one committee member, so I'm open to others. Well, we're talking about version one. I think we all knew we would be going a little bit deeper and having another version Have you folks, and we didn't give you any direction in our last meeting, but have you and the administration given any thought to if we were to go down the path of carving out some of the spending in version one? Do you have thoughts about where we might target? Do you have any thoughts at all? We didn't give you that direction, so it's perfectly okay if you say, no, we haven't had those types of discussions, but if you have, can you share some thoughts with us? What do you folks think?
I've had some conversations with both the principals, and I've asked them to make a list if we were asked to cut, what that would be. So they both knew that this was potential, and they've had some thoughts with that. You know, I know last year, I believe the way, if my memory serves me correctly, the committee said, you know, we'd like you to make a budget with a cut of $100,000, you know, $150,000, and then we kind of look at their list and figure out what will make that happen. We can certainly do whatever you like, but I have asked them to look at their budgets and see what it would take to reach a lower number.
Follow me. I think one of the benefits that we did last year is, we did, which is, Joy said, we had the people on the ground in the buildings decide where they think they could take the cuts, and then we sat around the table and went through it list by list and made those tough choices. I think that's the best way. We are not in the building. We, that's their job. I think we follow the same methods and let them make those cuts, and then we go back in and we say yes to this and no to that.
I think going down that route last year, I think it spelled it out very crisply in front of us what we were looking at and what our decisions were going to impact. So I completely agree with that.
So I think the next step is, we're going to do that, is to come up with a number, a target number for this committee to say, we want this much cut from that budget.
Okay. I'm going to sit and think. I'd rather not come up with a number.
Google a field that has waves on it, and if you actually look on Google Maps, it looks kind of cool, but it's not a good thing. It literally looks like this. So what happens is when they have practice, they run up and down the field and up and down the field, and it's actually causing waves in the football. Sorry, I'd like to do that up higher. So one of the things we originally were going to do was, we were going to hire a contractor to come in for $50,000 and re-crown the field, but with a little bit of more innovation and hopefully better fiscally responsible choice, our new head custodian here at the high school felt that we could do the work ourselves if we had a Kubota skid loader. That's not even a soccer-
That was a good job. I had to say that word the other day.
That's really hard, thank you. Okay, so if we purchased a Kubota skid loader, all we would have to do is then buy the lome and seed, which is a cost of $1,200. We would then also have the Kubota skid loader, that's really hard to say, to use for other projects, i.e., we have to bring in NABA on a regular basis to see him because we don't have any equipment that can save our parking lots. So it would lower our contractual costs over time by having this piece of equipment, and we would be spending the same amount of money but adding a piece of equipment, savings in the long run by doing this. So we think this is really a win-win for us and for the community. We also have another smaller Kubota utility vehicle with a Bobcat that we're looking to replace, and then we want to complete our virtual desktop project for $65,000. So the total for the capital plan at this point, again, is a draft figure, is $545,878. My recommendation, once it's voted, is to fund the capital plan as we have done for the last three years through excess and deficiency fund, and so it will not impact the town's assessment. So this is not additional funding that we are looking for the town to help. We will be funding this through our E and D fund. Just so you understand the impact, we currently have $1,296,035 in our E and D fund. By taking out the cost of the capital plan of $545,878, we will be left in E and D with $750,157.
Gordon was first.
Go ahead.
Just on the, on the equipment, does somebody in the custodial team have a voice license? Does he need it?
You're good. No problem.
Pardon my question, second question. What's our max number in E and D?
It's five percent of our budget, which is-
The 1296 is 40,000 below our max. So max is 1.3 million, 30,000.
That was good, thank you. I think I got everything. Hold on, I'll just do that line. Before I open it up to any questions that the audience might have, how do you folks want to proceed? Are there any other questions? What do you have thoughts? It's a lot to digest. Jason?
I just have one question for clarification's sake. If matching funds or funds to bring the replacement of the Syracuse field lighting all the way up to the complete dollar value, would we spend any of the $150,000 prior to having enough to complete the job?
I don't think we can.
I just wanted to be set up.
You're asking if we raise $300,000?
No, I'm saying if we failed-
Oh, I got, I got.
To have private funding come in to support the rest of the project, would we spend any of our $150,000 from our capital plan?
Well, so here's a question. I don't know the answer, I'm just brainstorming. If you had enough to do half, wouldn't you, would you just do two of the polls and then do two the following year?
I think it's a bigger question than that, Eric. I think it depends on what work has to be done and the timing of it.
You're right.
Because you wouldn't do, I understand what you're saying, do part of the polls and not all of them, but then it would probably cost us more to come back. It might be better, you know, for the community to take a vote at that time and put the funds aside, you know, put them back in E and D and revisit it another time. I don't think it's a project that we can do halfway.
That was my inclination, but I was also concerned that we would spend some money. I was concerned, that was my inclination for the project, from the financial side, was putting money on the table and then failing to meet the entire dollar value of project.
The one thing I would say- The one thing I would say is even if we put up two brand-new polls, it might be better than the eight half-working polls that we have. Ask the football coach.
Well, just aim the lights at our side then.
Well, that's the way it works now. It's the opposing side. Those lights don't work. I was holding the flags and I heard the coaches grumbling.
Eric, do you want to ask something or say something before...
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, probably specifically for Christine. Christine, when you talked about the solar power agreement, and you said, so the estimate that the budget is based off of is $225,000. And you said that for FY '18, you're currently on target for exceeding that? Can you tell me what the monthly run rate is and what is the expectation?
Oh, it changes every single month because it's based on the generation of the plant, which is different in the middle of December than it is in the middle of December. It depends on if the plant's been down. And then what happens is when we buy our... We pay 10 cents kilowatt hour. And then what happens is again, it gets sold on the open market. And so, the price changes for that, and it goes anywhere between 13 cents and 16 cents per kilowatt hour. So, that's how we get our funds. That's how the revenue is raised for us. Extreme like that. I would actually love to grab that. That really took a toll on us. Our bills for this January were three times higher than they were last year. Where did the end of our contracts where they're working with us to come up with a reasonable solution for this issue for that period of time? And then the next day, January 6th, things were back down toward normal level. So, we're just struggling to get the winter ahead early. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. The financial doesn't reflect a full amount of it because we do recover to get to the end of the year. So, we will be increasing our recoverances towards all these bills upcoming to give a better picture of what we expect to be for June there.
I was sorry. Can I ask one question? I'm going to go back to the telephones in our colleges. I'm going to go from memory, which is really terrible for me to do. We're still waiting to see some sort of benefit?
We are still struggling with a... Having the total conversion take place would be our lines from Verizon choosing a company that is willing to work with us. We have not had the cooperation that we have hoped for to make that transition.
From the current company?
Correct. And Steve is working diligently on it. That's a big focus for him.
You mean new company we're trying to transfer to?
The new company is willing to work with us and do whatever they can. It's the prior company that's having some struggle with the conversion information to convert all of our lines. Because there will still be some lines that need to be maintained with Verizon that cannot convert. So, we're still struggling through that.
And I'm putting you on the spot, Christine, and you're possibly not the right person to ask these questions of. And I'm not sure of the dollar value, so I'm not sure if I should spend too much time talking about this. But I guess I'm... I don't understand how the current company can be dragging their feet that much. Who besides Steve is involved? Does this need to be handled differently, do you think? And again, I'm putting you on the spot, and it's probably not the right person.
Through the company that we're converting to, Steve has sought out a consultant to kind of help us get through this. It did not work out as he had expected it to work out. Would matter a different telephone kind of falls into technology or it has been falling into technology. So, that's why he's the person that's really suing us. So, I have no progress to report.
Okay. Is there... I guess, is there some kind of game plan? Or, you know, how long can we let this continue?
That is a very good question.
I can take it offline.
No, I speak with Steve constantly to see if there is anything that we can provide. Is there anything that we can do? And I think it's just... It's a difficult task.
Do we need to sort of gain legal involvement here?
I don't know if that's the next step. I think it would hurt to speak to Steve, just to see what... But he believes our...
It's costing money on the land. You know, nothing personal. They weren't taking care of us poor. They're continuing not to. So...
So, my question too. I know you said in... I know we talked about this in the past. The lines that you have to keep with Verizon, is that because of fax?
There are faxes, yes.
That's the only...
That's... My understanding is that those are the only lines that we will need to maintain with them.
And here's another silly question. But I've eliminated faxes from my business, but are there...
There are things we still can fax.
That you have to fax?
There are some hydro that we can only fax. We can't scan them an email. Especially with this private information on that. Fax is the perfect, the secure method to use.
Could we target getting some kind of update for next month or on this topic?
Are there any other questions that you want to ask?
You do a lovely job all the time, Christine, honestly.
No, I know it's a challenge for me. I'm working our way through it.
Understood.
That's all I have to say.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you.
All right.
Sure.
I think the curriculum coordinators in the professional development council have been examining the district's plan for success in order to develop action plans for our professional development for next year to make sure that our professional development efforts are closely aligned with our school and district goals. Thank you to Julie Walker for her invitation to observe a seventh grade applied STEM class. The focus of the lesson that I was invited to was automated and robotics pull toys. The students were to step into the role of the engineer and to adopt a problem-solving mindset. And like tonight's presentation, it was a compelling real-world problem where students productively struggle to solve problems, collaborate, and interdisciplinary approach to learning. And what I believe you saw tonight was evidence of their growth mindset, their willingness to accept challenges and to think about ways to rework and redesign. And it serves as a powerful motivator for students. So, it was really wonderful to be able to be invited and to be able to see the results of their efforts. The students also have a marketing plan that goes along with their pull toys for this particular assignment. So, it was a wonderful interdisciplinary project-based lesson. In terms of MCAS, the Department of Education has communicated earlier this school year that groups of 10th graders from each high school will participate in field tests this spring for the next generation of high school MCAS. And so, I have attached a fax document here from the state. Silver Lake Regional High School will be selecting students by lottery to meet the 25% participation rate. But also in your packet, you'll see a list of frequently asked questions that you may find useful and helpful as to the purpose and scope of your field test. Congratulations to Linda Redding, who was nominated to become an online course design specialist for the Southeast Collaborative Regional Organization, Virtual During Academy. We are thrilled that she's going to take on that challenge and invite additional opportunities.
Do you have any idea which course she's planning on designing?
It is related to media and use of media in education, but for students, so...
I'll figure more about it as she develops further.
It's part of the training that she'll participate in. So, she submitted a brief proposal, but she'll develop it further through their training.
Wonderful.
So, I'd be happy to tell you more as soon as she completes the program.
Excellent. Thank you.
As part of this classic party exhibit at Tufts University throughout the end of March. If you have a chance at the end of tonight's meeting, it's close. It's kind enough to print all the wedding entry over there on the backboard with students' names. If you get a chance tonight, I encourage you to take a look at the artwork of these students. They've done a great job. In addition, our art club recently raised money and completed portraits as part of the memory project for Syrian refugee children, where they adopted a child and they draw a beautiful picture and keep safe to give to them and send them to model accounts to help them complete their service. We currently going on right now in the building have our first Noche Latina, which is a cultural night that was organized by our foreign language department. We have salsa dancing, food, a variety of different workshops about Latin culture. If you walked up here from the front of the building, you recognize or saw the flags and the decorations that are out. So, a lot of time and effort was put into this event by our teachers. It is open to the community, and we're hoping that this becomes an annual tradition that will hopefully continue to grow. And maybe next year, we won't have to schedule a conference that we can all attend. Coming up on our calendar, we have our annual social posting presentations. We do continue to require parents and juniors and seniors who wish to attend prom, attend one of these events. We have Taylor's message on February 26th, 27th, rather. And Sergeant Cruz will be here on March 13th to talk about social posting laws. Taylor's message is Kathy Meyer Sullivan, a mom, sharing her story about her daughter who tragically lost her life after a night of tini drinking in the woods. She's a local mom. She's come to us, our school, for about seven years now. Every time we hear her story, we're brought to tears, but it really resonates with the students. That same presentation is shared with our junior student the night before their prom. And then we have a former graduate speak to our seniors the night before theirs. So, we do really important presentations. Although we require our junior senior parents to attend, if there's too much to go to prom, it's open to all the public and all grades. So, everyone is welcome to come and learn some important information. And then last on my list tonight is a request to accept a donation from Cheryl Ratzler of Pembroke, Massachusetts, to accept a 1994 Volvo A50 for our automotive program. Her son is a student in this program. So, I'd like to thank him in advance for accepting this donation.
I have a motion to accept.
So moved.
Sorry, next one.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Thank you, Alcindor. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you.
So, we're finishing up our teacher conferences. Like, was our final, I think, our competition. It was over the last three days in the afternoon. And then our night event was tonight. Even for those who attended. We have our honorable recognition committee coming up next week, on the 15th. And we have our principals watching. And that's where three students from each team that nominated who want to be principal, and we talk about school. They tell me things about things and activities and things they want to tell the principal. It'd be great if they could add this. And things they like to tell the principal. "I never changed this, Christine Peels. The best part of the school." Which, you know, funny enough, when I do, when we do talk about that, they say the best thing about the middle school are the teachers. And I always... The other funny thing is that I've said this to our parents before, is the teachers always say the best thing about the middle school are the students. So, really makes it a special place because the teachers say that students are the best thing about the school. The students say the teachers are the best thing about the school. So, I'm very fortunate to be there. On from that, so I would like to ask permission for a field trip out of state to calculate carp with the teachers. They're going to take some students. They're going to do some STEM activities. They're going to talk about mathematics by talking about physics, computing rates, science, engineering, and energy. So, something that they would like to do with their kids. And so, I would like to ask out-of-state field trip permission.
I would, the way of food, yeah. Okay, no cost to the district?
At no cost to the district. That's Mr. Creed, let's say.
I'll second it. When is that approved?
So, we have a field of teachers in seventh grade, and they're going to be doing it sometime in June. It's something that they work together on a team, tie in some of the activities with their teachers. So, I'm very excited for it. It's something that they've been working on this year. And so, here we are, working together, talking.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jim, do you have anything to add? Chef Ron?
I'm already pulled.
Hi, what's your name?
Thank you. That's happened to me fast.
I did. Agenda.
As you know, we're taking a budget assessment, so there are a couple of things that you want to do. Let's see. I'm patient in detail. Our homeless transportation was really a struggle. This is the homeless transportation from our high school. At the middle school, we still have balance. The high school, I don't know where it is. It was about $8,000. This is through January, so whoever's up to date is reporting that this is everything that's happened. Including the transportation, January, the primary course, money and charge. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, but it's not going to go through the bill. It takes us until the end of the year.
Christine?
Yes.
Are these students actually under the Kynemanco? Or are they under DCF test?
We actually have a combination. And we keep them trapped separately because the reporting for them will be done separately. Yes, we're transporting students that are... Our students that are homeless here or our students that are students that are somewhere else living in our town. So, we're being trafficked individually by students so we can do the proper reporting for them. So, it is a mixture of all of them.
Thank you.
And the other thing I want to bring your attention is on the top of page four. It's our utility account. We thought we were doing a pretty good job this year. We're putting into offensive measures that we could conserve energy and we have gas and electric contracts that's nice. But the cold snap took a real toll on us. Our gas contract includes... We have a factor that adds 20% for the usage of the average winter. In this winter, we thought of CDL of that. And our contract includes our contracted price for that first 20%, but after that, it's the market price. And on January 5th, the market price hit $90 kilowatt hour, something.
Thank you, Christine. I'm sorry.
I know that... That's an email that obviously wants to be a part of it. It's coordinated by USA, about the sustainability. Even stickers with... Or if the Central United, it would be awesome. Lots of support. For freedom. Couldn't you email me? It would be really nice.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. We wish you guys luck with it. Joe is such a phenomenal person in so many ways. Thank you.
I did just want to mention that the quote that's on the flyer that Caitlin gave out, do you remember last month? We talked about the fact that the net metering agreement is raised almost $1 million. Joe Shaves was really the force behind Silver Lake developing the net metering agreement. When Joe pushed for us to sign up for doing it, for those of us who were around, I know someone, Mary can speak to it. I think he anticipated, if memory serves me correctly, $75,000 was what was the number that sort of kicked around. And in a period of a little less than four years, we raised almost $1 million through that. And so, the quote was from the thank you letter that I sent to Mary Allen. Because, you know, again, that's a funding source that, you know, really is tied pretty directly to Joe's foresight in forcing us to do it and sticking with it till we got the paperwork right. The policy and the procedure, Caitlin, that is going to happen. Thank you.
Should we stop by and just do the rest of the report with the subcommittees? Maybe that's fine. You want to do this? Thank you so much. Okay. And then, Paul and Francis.
Paul, can I make suggestions?
Sure.
Since Mark, get a vote, he will not be running. We'll have every one member. I wonder if you can wait on these couple of committees, unless there's someone that wants to step up. Negotiations, we have nothing going on right now. And safety fees and facility, unless one of you, current members here... Well, Eric, I thought you were on this.
No, I just...
Well, you shouldn't. I nominate Eric for S S F R. We call it S U F R.
Yeah, I understand. I think just to plug all the holes, if somebody is going to step up, like...
Yeah. I'm checking to see if I don't have any conflicts. So...
And then, we all need tons. Just in case you have to meet again, I would mind somebody jumping in. We all...
I just need to be... I need to tell you when you're going to be involved.
Yeah, so we did have one.
Oh, okay. Look on.
Thank you. All righty, minutes.
There was one note that was recorded that the numbers slipped off. Most of them were fourteen oh oh, one was sixteen oh oh, is that? No, it just, other than that.
Which fold is that? Do you have that?
I don't have it, it's in my head, sorry. It's deep in this.
I'm sorry, Jason, which one is it?
I don't have the minutes, we need to, I have it.
One was seven?
Some page seven, halfway down. If we can amend that, just to read the proper notebook, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Oh, okay. It's about the principals.
Yeah. Okay.
Sorry.
I'll second that, between then.
All those in favor? I'm standing, thank you, ma'am. Okay. Principal's report, Ms. Gill. I'm here. I'm thrilled to share with everyone that for the first time since the two thousand and eleven season, our gold basketball team has turned its path. It's a huge accomplishment, it's been working really hard this season, so I wanted to point that out. Our graduation committee, our first one for the class of two thousand and eighteen, we held last week. And suddenly, we start every January, and then we move in until the actual day of graduation. It's made up of parents, students, teachers, as well as our class officers. And I'd like to publicly invite our class of nineteen sixty-eight, fifth of the union class, to join us for this year's commencement. So, those of you who are on TV listening, we encourage you to reach out to us. Our student council recently submitted their application for a gold council award. They've received that award in the last six or seven years, and we're anticipating them seeing it again this year, but they've worked really hard, through school around, school spirit this year. And as part of that process, they're currently working on a winter spirit week for us. But their focus for that week is not around homecoming, but rather around philanthropy, and they want to raise awareness and raise funds to be back to the local charities. Several of our students were recently recognized for their outstanding achievements in art. Dario Mendez, for his picture Balance won the photography award for a student recognition team art show. He also received an honorable mention for his photo called Abandoned Factory. Olivia Dole received a gold key for her photo titled Katie, through Scholastic, as well as a silver key for her photo called Orphanage. May McWilliams, drawing called Glass Bottles, was accepted into the jury recognition team art show. Sam Lindolfi received an honorable mention through Scholastic for her photo called Chicken. And Natalie Neames received a silver key for her photo titled Aaron. Ava Marisol, Sam Lindolfi, Emily Dwyer, Riley Herman, and Mia Nickerson will all have their work on exhibit alongside May's drawing and Dario's photo at the state transportation building, beginning this week through the end of March. Show is available on Community Daily, Monday to Friday from nine to five. And Olivia Dole's photo about Katie will be on exhibit as honor and funding. So, Olivia and Caitlin, I welcome you, as the rest of the committee members do, to share what you, put your plans out with us.
Where should I stand?
Wherever you're comfortable, wherever you're comfortable.
Not an awesome public speaker, but, so I'm Caitlin, I'm Joe's daughter, and this is Olivia, his niece and granddaughter. So, thank you for having us. So, basically, how this came to be, for Christmas this year, this was our second Christmas without him. And basically, each year, I've tried to do something little, because we have a big, very involved family, and I try to do something small to kind of remember him in his honor. So, this year, I chose, you guys will see on the slider, I had those little stickers made, in his memory. And then, I got the idea after that, they were gifts to my family, and then I got the idea after that, because we do have the scholarship that goes, that we started last year, and we just may not turn on a beam and will aim for as many years as possible, to a deserving student of Silver Lake at the age of four. So then I started thinking, like, maybe I can have more of these made and tell them and all the proceeds would go to the prom. I kind of told my family what my plans were, I had nothing really in place, and then every Monday, we have dinner at my grandparents' house, Joe's parents, we sell dinner there every Monday. And Olivia came up to me, and she's like, um, I have a bunch of money for you from the teachers at Silver Lake, and I was like, oh, okay. So then, my first thought probably coming from dad in the back of my head was like, okay, there has to be a proper way to do this, you know, proper steps and policies. So, basically what we did, my mom helped me coming up with a flyer. A big part of it, and obviously all the funding is for, for the scholarship, to go to the students, dad was really passionate about children's education and continuing education, and that sort of thing, but it's important to me to also educate people on what he suffered from, because it's very rare and it's often very misdiagnosed. So, so my plan is, when, if and when we have people who are interested in these, I put them in like a little bag for Christmas, and my plan is to include that little insert I put, it's just a short, little info piece. I am a nurse now, I was a twenty thirteen graduate here, but I'm a nurse, so education on health and everything like that's important to me, too. So include that with the stickers, if people choose to purchase and donate, and it serves as a kind of double, dual purpose for us. Any amount of donations are accepted, obviously, but five dollars with a sticker, or we're selling them two for eight. And, so, basically, I was going to ask if it's okay, or if we have permission to put them in faculty mailboxes, if here in the middle school, we're going to the elementary meeting on Monday, so we're kind of tackling that as a little, a different kind of side from here. But we want to be able to reach the faculty. Dad had a really long service here, and he was really passionate about it, just to see if anyone is interested in donating, or if we can do, I have a plan for a receptacle, if we could do something like that, keep it here in the office, but kind of looking for both feedback and suggestions based on what we found, why we have plans.
So, if teachers or anybody wanted to purchase this, how would they, how would they do that? Is there, would they contact you, or would you have them here for people to purchase?
So, Ms. Orca and Ms. Gill were generous enough to meet, they were about two weeks back, and they came up, told us their suggestions. So we would come up with a receptacle, and possibly leave it with the front office or front secretary, and maybe designate like a one week period that teachers or faculty or anybody, students, but whoever wants to donate, with that flyer, with a sticker, to show what they would, you know, what the stickers look like, and with the awareness card, so people can understand what it is. So, wouldn't it be like an ongoing, like, you know, just donate whenever, it would be like a designated one week thing, that if they were interested in that sort of thing, maybe. And then, I would leave the stickers with the secretary, she could either give them out of her own discretion, or teachers could like sign their name, and then I can get into them at any time, like, I don't mind how that process goes, I'm willing to put on whatever's easiest, I don't want to put too much of a burden on the else.
Sure, we can set up something similar, we can do awareness campaigns, we have kiosks or handles, inflection of funds, and giving out the stickers, sure.
Do you have a week timeframe that you're thinking of?
I didn't have any specific timeframe, I, January, February twenty-eighth is National Women's Day, so I was thinking maybe during that week, which was that kind of fitting. I don't know what day is a week. Everyone hates this question. So.
I got it.
Maybe having it in the front, I don't know if you guys know, but other than him being extremely passionate about the school, his number one passion line was motorcycles. So my idea was, he has, we have a few of his helmets, and they're like the full face helmets with the shield that collects up. So I have a pretty artistic cousin, and I'm going to have her come up with a bottom to the helmet, and the receptacle, I'm actually going to have like a sticker displayed on the helmet, and just have like that be the receptacle box, like people can put their money in the helmet, so that kind of speaks to what I'd say.
Caitlin, what about, what about funding this in the newspaper? I mean, there are certainly plenty of people that don't have anything to do with the school, but in my opinion, yeah, very.
We're getting there, this is kind of my first step, because I, I wasn't sure, I have some fundraisers, and just, I mean, she was one who really came to me and was like, I'll get this off, and I was like, all right, we're doing this then, like, we're ready. So I was going to start with the school, and just kind of like, my mom's made a spreadsheet, so we're getting kind of anything, where we're going to go, and how it's going to be, a correct track, and official, the flyer and everything, so my plan is to start in the school, really getting a handle on what I'm doing, and like, how to just run the whole thing.
Well, as it turns out, you are on TV. With our keys to report here tonight, so I'm sure we'll see something about it this year. Sounds wonderful, a great tribute to you, Dad.
Patience of every part on there. And lots of things change between each competition, but we are proud that after each event, we were able to grow and improve, and we may not have places where we're at right now, but we are, we're proud of what we're leaving behind, because as seniors, we're not going to be here to see what we do next year, and we're not, we don't get to say, well, we'll get them next year, but we do get to say that we're proud of the program that we've been a part of, and what we've developed the program into. And one of the aspects of the competition is actually an engineering notebook. And so, it's a log of your entire journey as a team, and like daily entries of everything about the robot, but there's also sections on the team as a unit, and each member and their roles, and there's also a section at the back that is more of a management section, and it asks about future plans, and how you plan to keep basically your program continuing on, even though certain members may leave, or certain things may change. And filling this out, I was very proud to know that this program is still going to continue after I leave, and it's grown and changed a lot since I've been here, we've switched competitions, we've switched mentors, we've switched approaches and techniques, but we're still growing and developing with the times, and I'm very proud that I got to be a part of this.
We're pretty proud of you all with this.
So, just one last thing I want to say about it, is that First Robotics really does emphasize the process of learning throughout it. I mean, even if you don't perform well at a competition, you go there and you're helped by however many teams, and you learn so much that you can apply by your next competition, because you go to several a year, or by the next year even. And, I mean, First Robotics, the First Robotics team here at Silver Lake was founded, started by a student, and, I mean, we fundraised for the approximately like two thousand dollars that we spend on RoboBot for this, and it's just such a, it's such a good experience to learn from. And I just want to emphasize that First really stresses that, through the process.
Yes, one of the reasons that we are required to keep the engineering notebook is so that even through all our mistakes and our trial and error, we're going to be leaving this as a law behind for our other students, and they'll be able to see what we tried and what went wrong, and hopefully they can learn from that, and grow and excel in ways that we couldn't, because we needed to go through those failures, but they'll learn from us.
I, I have some audience that wants to make a comment, but this is fantastic, and the experience you folks are getting is tremendous, it's going to put you light years ahead of so many others. And remember, the best part of life is the journey, you know, the, when you get to the finish line in any project, any goal, what have you, that's wonderful, that's great, you place, you win, you lose, you try again. It's the journey that gets you there, that's the best part of the whole experience, savor it and enjoy it, and I commend you all, you're fantastic students for what you're doing. Charlie, I'm going to.
One with my talent ministry, I haven't been shared with the cultural council of Halifax, which sounds weird, these were not cultural council objects, but during the years, the definition of what we can provide grants for includes science related projects and events, including, we funded big branches last, a couple months ago, for the robotics team this coming year, so it's wonderful to see what's happening with our funding and support. Congratulations.
There are some, I shouldn't, there's, there are a lot of thank yous that we have to certainly say, to our, no, to our, to our main sponsors, but to start with, thank you to the school and Ms. Gill for supporting us, Mrs. Gill for supporting us, and to the school committee, too. But when I say support, what I mean is that we get to use the resources of the school, we get to use the school van, we get to use the school, school classrooms and stuff like that, and you know, to keep the school operational, so the finance committee and stuff like too. But when it comes to the budget of the robot itself and funding the teams, the thank yous go out to things like the Halifax Cultural Council, Kingston Cultural Council, and the Plimpton Council, Council Council, and of course, Entergy, that's always been with us, and, but the other part of it that's funded is actually by a camp that is also run by the mentors and students, so we do outreach to younger students to get them involved in robotics, and that brings, that brings in the second most amount of our revenue, and in the future, that will follow be the most amount of our revenue. There's a lot of thank yous that really have to go out from us, but when it comes to actual budgeting, you're looking at the people who also brought, who developed the budget for this. It was, it was started by a student, the fundraising is done by students, and the only reason why I'm really speaking now, if you guys don't let them go, is because all of the applause and accolades ought to go to the students, because they're the ones that are doing it.
My daughter loves your camps. Thank you for the wonderful presentation, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep, I have.
Wait, you know, yours, yours is, your new motion.
You're not playing, are you?
I'm a nurse, so you know what, you're covering. You're upset that I brought sign?
No, no!
It's all about efficiency.
No!
All right. Point taken.
All right, so, next on the agenda, we have the privilege of having one of our former and extremely beloved members' daughter and niece, who can speak to us about scholarships in this.
To make sure to follow our district's planning for success model, which is meeting the diverse needs of all learners. So, one of the things that we've really tried to do is to make sure that we have the appropriate program which can support all students, whether they're our students who are in our robotics club, to students who may be having some struggles, maybe coming back from a concussion, students who maybe have some other types of learning needs, to make sure that we provide the services to keep our students in district and happy. We make sure to provide appropriate staffing to maintain teacher to student ratio, to achieve the district's goals and the needs of all learners. One of the things that we're trying to do this year is, just to finish the slide before, is to invest in social emotional learning, we've talked a lot about that, sorry, you can handle it. STEM initiatives, again, you can see our robotics club, and some of the programs are hoping to develop in middle school, allied health, the CTE program we've been speaking about for numerous years, and to continue to support technology. It's also incredibly important to us to ensure a safe and healthy learning environment is maintained. Thank you, sorry about that. So again, just to sort of focus on this, again, we went through last year a planning for success model, the state came in, we did a tremendous amount of professional development, we developed a plan, and our focus is and has remained to be meeting the needs of diverse learners. Some of the ways that we are supporting that program is through some of the things that we're hoping to develop and build upon currently. Our middle school language based program that Lori talked about last month, well, talked about for quite a while, our middle school STEM program, our high school allied health program, our high hoping to develop and build upon, um, currently. Our middle school language-based program that Marie talked about last month, well, talked about for quite a while, um, our middle school STEM program, our high school allied health program, our high school bright program. Kayla spoke about the bridge program to help our students who, um, may be coming back from concussions or maybe having some anxiety issues to provide some additional supports. Um, and also our high school 18 to 22 transition program. Those are some of the areas that we're looking to do. Our professional development, and again, Jill, I think, just spoke about some of this, has remained on, um, a focus on social emotional learning. You may remember, we talked about the balcony people, which was one of the, um, our kickoff, um, which was a great, I know our teachers particularly liked that one, had that one really well. Uh, we've been focusing on highly effective teaching and growth mindset to make sure that we have all of our students believe they can continue to grow and to learn. Um, some of the things as we built our budget, um, that drives our operational budget are programs. Um, again, to continue to maintain and assess for the development of programs and opportunities, personnel, to maintain our class size, support professional development, and engage staff in a meaningful process of supervision and evaluation, and our operations to assure students and classes are well-conditioned in items are purchased fast effectively. Um, our budget is developed to enhance and maintain teaching and learning initiatives. Um, we always have some potential budget risks. Um, state or federal funding cuts, um, if John Creed were here, he would certainly add some, uh, color to this sentence. Um, was color appropriate? I think that was a good choice, yes. Mild, that's a mild choice, yeah. Um, again, nine C cuts, regional transportation are some of the potential areas. Um, additional unforeseen and unfunded mandates for mass department development and secondary education. Again, I can see John smiling. Um, unanticipated special education at our district placements and requirements. I want to stop here for a minute. This does not as much impact Silver Lake because again, children ages three through 22 go back to the elementary districts. But to the people who spoke earlier, I understand you have a pot of money within the town. So if it impacts the elementary, it impacts Silver Lake. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. But again, it's not necessarily a Silver Lake budget issue. Um, charter school enrollment increases, and we're gonna go into some of those numbers and what that's going to mean to us. Aging buildings, um, certainly have been dealing with some discoveries that I would prefer to not keep finding. Um, technology and equipment uptake, uh, weather-related costs, snowstorm cleanups. Um, I obviously cannot control the weather. That has become clearer and clearer to me no matter how hard I try. Um, so that always adds to our budget. Um, and insurance, that's pretty much a great unknown. So, one of the things that I've tried to do, and again, I, I tend to be more of a visual learner and I, hopefully that works for you also, is to try to track some of the data, um, in the district in terms of the number of students who are attending different types of programs. Um, in your budget books, you've had some other information. These are right now our students who are attending private schools, um, from fiscal year 2013 through 2018, grade seven through 12. Um, so you can see in 2013, we have had 161 students. We are now down to 124 students, um, who are attending private schools. Um, I believe that probably has something to do with the fact that we have great programs, but I also believe it probably has something to do with parents' inability to fund some of the private schools, which are extremely costly. Um, either way, I'm, I'm happy that the numbers are, um, lowering and staying reasonably steady at this point in time. Um, again, I think for us to be competitive, we have to be able to maintain and have options and programs for our students to participate in as if they were at a private school or as if they were in a charter school. I think that is part of what makes Silver Lake the place to be, all in every day.
That's right.
Um, the next one is charter school enrollment. Again, for the same period of time. Um, in 2013, we had a total of 20 students from all three districts. That's the red line, the top line, um, who attended charter schools. Um, currently, we have 59 students who are attending charter schools. Um, right now, over the last, uh, four-ish years, seems to be running between seven to 10 to 11 students a year increasing going to charter schools. Um, it is something that is a concern for us. Um, the programs that our students are attending that are charter schools is rising tide in Plymouth and in Norwell, the South Shore Educational, no, not educational lab, I'm not so, I, I, it's in Norwell.
South Shore Public Charter School.
South Shore Public Charter School, sorry, couldn't call up that name. Um, but again, it is something that, um, we do have students that are leaving us. Often what happens is, um, in the spring, parents are deciding. So one of the things that we have tried to do is to make sure we have opportunities where the families and the students can see that Silver Lake is really a place to be, to try and get them to continue to maintain and to sell and to publicly really, um, promote some of the programs that we have going on in Silver Lake.
So I heard to a great friend that they're not at our school, opening locally, is that do we know, you know, I, I only know that it's in Plymouth. I don't know too much about it. But do we know sort of whether it's from our district or the eligible or what do we, what do we know?
I believe it is more of a special education or a particular program. It is, uh...
Julie?
Yes.
I've spoken with members of the Plymouth School Committee who actually worked in conjunction with the group who was trying to start that charter school. It was to fulfill a need that they saw in their population. They actually encouraged this charter school to come. And it's for some students who have high risks, but they're not special ed-related per se.
Yeah, it isn't, it's a traditional charter school. Probably the best way to describe it. But thank you for bringing that up. I should have thought to mention it. So the next page is a little bit scary. Um, and this is an area that I think, um, really certainly speaks to an impact that this can have on our budget. So the charter school sending tuition, um, for FY18 is $726,874. We are reimbursed only for FY18, $129,464. The expense for us for the charter school tuition is $597,410. If you look at progression from FY12, um, you can see the impact of the cost that it is, uh, costs Silver Lake in our budget, um, for the charter schools. Um, it is something that we are aware of. It is something that we are working on. Again, I think the best thing that we can do as a district is to continue to promote Silver Lake, to continue to promote and support the programs that we have, which I, I might be biased, but I think are fantastic. Um, you know, I think our kids really come out with an incredible education and have incredible opportunities here. And I think that is probably going to be one of the best ways to keep kids here. Um, again, parents have the right to send their child to the place they feel the child would be most successful, whether that is a private school, a religious school, a charter school. Um, you know, our hope is to keep and maintain as many of those students here as we can. Um, so the enrollment for grade seven through 12 in our full district for FY18 was 1710. 59 students attended charter schools. Um, for 3.5% of our population were attending charter schools. That's an increase in 2012, again, it was 1.1%. Um, so it is increasing. Um, we are doing what we can to try to stop as much as possible. Um, and we will continue to work on and address it.
Julie, do you have some questions?
Sure.
Can I have any of this, I'm not sure. Do we reach out to the families of the children that are going to attend charter schools to find out what were some of the key factors that made the parents or the kids decide to, to go down that road?
We have not done a survey. Um, there, I, I know actually we had somebody else who asked the exact same question. We can certainly try it. Um, when we ask a question about them going to us and impacting them, we get a pretty small return. I honestly don't know how many of them would take the time to respond. Um, but we could certainly try. Um, and again, I'm not, I'm not sure how obligated they would feel, but it would be worth a try.
Agreed. But it would be a very targeted audience, you know, it would be, you know, 10 families perhaps.
I was just gonna, I was just saying that to Jason, and I think you're right. I, I remember discussing this over the years, trying to fool people. And, and I think it has to do with privacy and badgering or, you know, it's their business what they did.
I think many years, like six or seven years ago, I think we did try and do something. And I think we ran into a problem.
Yep, I believe that, and you're right. Just maybe check with Fred.
Yeah, charter, charter schools do upcorame us, but it's not...
They, they, they take kids, they come back to...
Yeah, absolutely. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So the next slide, um, this gives you an idea of per pupil cost comparisons. Um, we are somewhat unusual in that as a district, we are just a seven through 12 district. So it's hard to find areas that are comparable school systems that are just a seven through 12 school system. So you can see our per pupil cost for Silver Lake is $14,529. And this is based on the FY16 financial information, just so you know, that's the last time that they have all the information public. It goes back that far. Cantascwa, uh, which is out of Mr. Matt's, is $13,708. Old Rochester, which is, um, just Old Rochester, Mary and Matt, poised it, Old Rochester, I guess, actually. Sorry. Um, is $14,963. Nauset, which is on the Cape, on the, uh, lower Cape, is $18,753. And the state average per pupil expenditure is $15,024. Um, now we get to the assessments. And I'm gonna let my dear friend, Ms. Haley.
On the assessments, as you know, they're heavily influenced by our budget, revenue, chapter 70, and the mineral contribution. And for this current year, our chapter 70 funds are $7,291,51. And that is a net decrease of $96,000 over the prior year. The next significant item that I want to talk about is the mineral contribution. And as you can see in this diagram, the mineral contributions for each of the three towns were significantly for a total of $458,000. I want to talk about how I actually compute the assessments. So we start with the budget. And then the first thing I do is subtract out the non-net school spending, transportation, capital, things like that. Then I have to look at revenues. Could I just ask you to go ahead one page for a second? The revenues. So the revenues we look at, one of the items we have in the past years is the Pembrooke insurance reimbursement for each hire. That number will continue to do enough. That was for a pool of folks that were, um, with us when Pembroke left in 2004. And unfortunately, the number has decreased. So this is what I'm expecting for the next calendar year. And this is based off of what we're currently getting reimbursed for Pembroke. We build them monthly based on the, um, enrollings that we have and any changes that have happened. The next item is the estimated CTE. Now, for next year, I have used the same reimbursement rate for this current year and the same numbers of students that we have for this current year. So we have not built anything in for if we do receive additional students from Pembroke. So that's, that's, that's why that number has remained the same. The purchase power agreement, I try to be conservative though because I just don't know if I can look down at this event that could happen. And I, I exposed them and I did get information on their estimated generation for next year. Um, it's pretty consistent with what it is right now, although it does, the plan does degrade a little bit each year, a half a percent. They're not expecting any shutdowns. So I've used the conservative number that we used for this current year also. And we will, we will exceed that, that's what we're expecting for next year. The shared cost number is based on the current version, the version one shared cost budget that we had. There's a slight difference of $1,500 between version one and version two. So I don't expect that to change drastically. After we look at all of these items, we then look at their required contribution for the towns. And once that number is deducted, everything else up to that is purely based on our enrollment register. So we go back to that slide, thank you. You can see each of the steps. Once we have our mineral contribution, how that impacts the assessments. Um, absent the mineral contribution, I have to add that item. So I'm adding back net transportation. That's our total transportation less than we're reimbursing from the Commonwealth for regional transportation. Then I should add that the assessment for the equipment that we have any capital items, that's around $73,000, $7400. Then we get to our debt. One thing I did want to mention about debt, as you may recall, in July 2015, we did refinance our debt. So this, this coming year, 2019, we'll be paying $60,343,000, $60,343,000 less than we would have paid before we went to refinance. So it does make a significant difference for us. And then, Charlie, on the bottom of the page, do you see the percentages that we use in the actual enrollment numbers? That's also included in your budget pack, which shows what your mom says about 201. And you know, my hands still grab. If we move on to the page, there we go. That kind of spells out all of our revenue sources. And you can tell the biggest chunk is definitely the assessments. And it's color coded for all the other areas that we have. Traditionally, the state is about a third of our budget for us, but that seems to be decreasing. The bottom of the page is just a recap of this year versus last year, where we are and where the percentage increases are. And as, um, Mary even mentioned earlier, although our budget went up, less than, it's gone up less than 4%, what that means to the town of Kingston, based on all those factors and all those revenue numbers that we just discussed, their change would be 6.7% for 19 over 18. And then similar increases with Halifax and Plimpton as well. Another question to mention, look summary of assessments. Does it make sense?
So the last slide is a picture that, um, Kayla had mentioned, and it's called Balance, and it's by Dario Mendez. And, um, I really thought it spoke to exactly what we're trying to do here. Um, we're trying to balance the needs of our students against, um, the needs of the towns in terms of building a budget. So I know that we all have the same goal in mind to provide the absolute best education possible while being physically responsible. Um, and, you know, that is something that I truly believe in. I also believe in communicating and being transparent with the budget. Um, you know, we really have worked to be more, um, to help you understand more of the pieces that build into our budget. Um, you know, the presentations that Marie has done, when we've had Steve Hello come in and, um, present on technology. Um, we've had the coordinators were kind enough to give us all the, uh, books that we have, all of our curriculum materials. So we have some additional information as we're building our budget. Um, but again, it is a balancing act. Um, I will never look that graceful. Um, but I do want to let you know that we are all working terribly hard to provide a balanced budget that the towns, um, can afford and that meet the needs of all of our students within the district. Um, so it is something that I, when I saw the picture, um, I was absolutely thrilled because I couldn't have asked for a better way to end, at least in my mind. Um, so there is a little bit of good news that I wanted to share with you. Um, so you have a single sheet, hopefully, that looks like this. Um, when we built the version one budget, um, the information we had, and I think Charlie could probably help me with this, um, is we had an increase in insurance of 10%. And I believe Kingston and Halifax both believed that was going to be the number. I, um, I did not have confidence with Plimpton, but I think that was the number everybody was going with. I believe Charlie went to a meeting and I think the projected now is 7.9%. Oh, Charlie, I love you. I didn't mean anything weird by that, by the way.
Just to premierize people again, both Silver Lake and the Halifax and Plimpton are in the Mayflower Municipal Health Group, which is Consortium of Governmental Units, school districts, towns, body districts, fire districts, UNEA. Um, they're still in the process of setting rates. The steering committee, which is a small subset of the one representative of each of the communities, which is a much larger group, voted, uh, yesterday or the day before. It's been a long week for everybody. Um, to use a little bit more of the fund balance, they're, we're having a good year this year, to help subsidize the rates a little bit more. So depending on which plan you're talking about, there are nine health insurance plans that are offered, at least by Mayflower. Whether Silver Lake offers all nine options, I don't know. But depending on what it is, it's, the rates are gonna be between four and a half and 6.9% increase. So... So, the tiers are, the low co-pay, high premium tiers are going up six point five or six point nine percent. The, what's it called, rate saver or benchmark plans are going up either four point five or four point nine. So, if most of Silver Lake's employees are on those, they do that much better. If they're up in the traditional plan, which is, for instance, Halifax, most of our employees are in, then it's still six point nine, six point five, but it's better than eight, which is what I thought it might be a couple of weeks ago, or ten, which was a couple of months ago. And the steering, the larger group will meet on March seventh. In Halifax, I would expect that we're going to have a close unanimous vote to approve those rates. So, I think the percentages are fairly certain. And Christine will then just run her spreadsheet.
That's right. So, that's literally not off the press. So, I had spoken with Charlie, I don't remember, not that long ago, and it was at eight percent, seven point nine percent. So, for us to go down from ten percent to the seven point nine percent or eight percent is a savings of sixty thousand dollars. So, the sixty thousand dollar increase now looks like it would be about another thirty thousand dollars. And again, we, you know, we can go through exactly what it will be, but it's probably about thirty thousand more. We have received a retirement since our last meeting. The savings for that position would be another twenty thousand dollars. So, we can reduce our budget by eighty thousand dollars. That reduction would bring us down to twenty-five million four hundred and sixty thousand one hundred and fifty-five. The difference between the FY eighteen budget and the draft reduced version one would now be eight hundred and ninety-five thousand seven hundred and eighty for a three point six five percent increase. Does everybody sort of following my... I try to figure out a way to get a lot of information on the single page, and still for me to be able to read it. So, it's sort of an interesting challenge. The reduction in these assessments per town, again, without this new information, Halifax now reduced another twenty-five thousand six hundred. Kingston will be reduced forty-four thousand five hundred and sixty, and Plington will be reduced nine thousand eight hundred and forty. That reduction is off the presentation of the slides. Okay? I did just want to point out again, though, that there are things that we just can't control. Some of the reasons that I know the towns are struggling is a required minimum contribution increase, and between the three towns, that does total four hundred and fifty-eight thousand two hundred and twelve. You know, it's the things like chapter seventy, the towns can't control what the state says is your minimum contribution. I think we all have those things that we're dealing with, and I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. So, that was great news. Thank you, Charlie. That was excellent.
I'm happy to, all right.
Yeah.
Can I ask, you're saying that these further decreases are already in...
No, they're not.
They're not.
They're not.
Okay.
No. This, we did not change the assessment presentation. The school committee has not given me any direction. We just did the version one budget. This is information that came in between the last two, and again, we've got some other new, not off the press.
Okay.
I have just one other piece of information, if we're still awake, and that is our capital plan. So, you have in your packet a draft capital plan. It has been discussed at the last safety facility fees and revenue, is that right? Yes.
Suffer.
Committee in January. We do have another meeting scheduled for March. And at this point, these are the areas that the committee would like, the full committee, to evaluate. Actually, Maureen, do you want to take it? Or do you want me to continue?
All right, continue.
So, one of the things that we have maintained is for middle and high school repairs, two hundred thousand. We've talked about trying to do an architectural study of the ad building, and we've gone back and forth. We will need to figure out something with the ad building, and hopefully, this would give us some idea of the best way to proceed. Syracuse Field Lighting. So, for those of you who don't know, the poles that were out at Syracuse Field were back before anyone knows where. We want them used. We had, three years ago, tried to cut down the poles, put a new top on to give them a little bit of extended life. We had engineers come in who told us the light is over, basically, and that they were a danger to the students and could fall over, and recommended strongly them coming down as soon as possible. Since we certainly do not want to end up in a situation where someone is injured, we have, are in the process of having those taken down, because we cannot chance a fifty-foot pole, well, maybe four feet now, but falling over on someone during a windstorm or across the road or into the buildings. So, the estimates that we have would be anywhere between a two hundred to three hundred thousand to replace the poles. The subcommittee felt that that was a huge burden financially on the capital plan to fund the entire amount. So, we went back and forth, and what they came up with was to fund what would probably be half of the cost through the capital plan of one fifty, and then a subcommittee has been formed to try to raise money to supplement and to pay for the lights. So, Eric Crowe and I think Maureen are chairing that subcommittee to try to do some fundraising to hopefully make up that balance. At this point in time, the lights will be coming down, because they're just unsafe. And hopefully, if we're really lucky, by the end of the summer, we will have enough funding available to rebuild them before the fall and the need for them.
Excuse me. Just to be clear, the committee that we're working on is a private committee. It's not associated with the school.
Thank you. Sorry.
It's parents. Eric and I are both parents of football students and sports students, and we chose to go forward with this. We've actually spoken to the State Ethics Commission. We are on there as parents, but we are stepping back from any vote that will be taken on the lighting, because it could be construed as conflict of interest.
Thank you for that. The upper football field, so we have a football...
Well, I'd rather have them take a look at their budgets and see what they can come up with, rather than say, we want fifty thousand, hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, as Mr. Pike suggested. I don't think that we should randomly throw out a number and say, you know, we want you to cut five hundred grand out of this budget. They know what they need for their school.
I disagree, Maureen.
Other thoughts?
Well, I guess my concern is that, you know, we don't, you know, I don't think any number we would come up with would be a random number. I think we have some guidance from the towns as to what they are hoping that we'll come back with. So, you know, if we don't take that into consideration, it doesn't make sense for us to bring a budget forward that we know that the towns can't support. So, you know, having that number as a guide, even if it's not a hard and fast number, I think, you know, last year was my first year going through the process, and that was really helpful for me personally, to sort of understand where do we need to get to, what are the things that we feel like might be on the table, and to be able to prioritize those things.
Just want to remind everybody at the table that we're elected as school committee members, and I know I say it every year, and I'll continue to say it, we're not on the finance committee. We're not selectmen. We represent the students and the parents and other taxpayers of our town. But our job here is to support the children of Silver Lake and the district.
Completely agree, and I echo that. I do, you know, the last slide this evening was the balancing act, and I think it's, as one committee member, I think it has to be a reasonable balance between the needs and the towns. What sort of direction do we want to give our administration?
I'd like to ask the principals to come back with what they feel they could cut out of the budget while still providing an adequate education for our children.
And that would give us version two to work from. Any other thoughts? What kind of timing would that take? Do you want to have a meeting prior to lunch meeting?
I think we'll need to...
I'll second the motion just to put it on the table, though I detest the word adequate with education.
Educationally sound. Please change my word to educationally sound, Lisa.
Can I make a...
It's all just...
Okay, so, I'm kind of on the fence between just saying that or giving them a number. I almost think, maybe we say, come up with four hundred thousand dollars of cuts between the two schools, but prioritize them, so then we can decide, just like we did last year, but if we say four hundred thousand dollars, and that number is up for debate, obviously, but then at least that gives them a guide in how many things they need to cut and what those ramifications are, and then you would be able to make a decision.
And that's prioritization too, I think.
Yes, prioritization is...
A lot of scattered lumps. Such and such an amount, such and such an amount. You know, have it like three or four.
Maybe different options if you're not sure, you know, just some options and what those ramifications are.
Like a worst-case one, but have a couple.
Just painful. Doesn't have as much bleeding.
I mean, there may be some things that if we know we're going to need to cut, that you'd be able to say, yep, this is definitely on the table, and these things, you know, maybe aren't, or, you know, just that prioritization, I think, is really helpful.
Okay, I think we have a motion on the table for discussion to, as Maureen indicated, come back with, without a number. We want to vote that?
I remove my motion. You move your second.
Second.
Were you moving it?
I'm not removing my second.
I'm removing my motion.
You're okay, fine. You don't need me to remove your second if you don't move your motion.
I would like to reword and move it that we request our principals to come back, listing priorities for not more than four hundred thousand dollars cut from the combined budget, including the other departments in the school, not just the, not the schools, but the administration, everyone.
Please, the operating budget.
The operating budget.
Yeah.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Absolutely. I've mentioned this evening that we have eighty thousand that I can reduce the budget based on Charlie's good news. That'll be about another thirty, so that's a hundred and ten thousand. I'm assuming that would leave two hundred and ninety thousand.
Correct.
Great. Just want to make sure we're on the same page. Thank you.
Is there any discussion around the capital plan items as discussed this evening? I obviously understand that this, we go back to anybody, if there are any thoughts anybody wants to share. And it might be better for the committee discussion anyways, it's kind of a robust list.
So, this list has been worked over by that committee for months now, and it's comprised of many members who were present. You know, we have prioritized, we've moved things further down the list. Originally, this plan was a five-year plan. It's extended out now to about an eight-, nine-year horizon to get these projects done. The amount of work that's been done in-house, based on the envelope studies of the two buildings and the water infiltration we've had, we've really whittled that number down by doing a lot of the in-house work on it ourselves, and with the help of Karen now being on staff here, that's going even more smoothly every year. That two hundred thousand dollar number up there for taking care of the two buildings is a reduction in what our original estimate was. This is an ongoing process, and we don't know exactly when this is going to be over. But the fact is, we've had capital plans like this for the past four years, and we've taken from E and D each of those years. And you can see, after every year where we take for the capital plan from E and D, we're able to get E and D almost back up to that five percent threshold. So, without having any impact on the town's budget for the next fiscal year, I think this is a wise course to maintain and take care of the property we do have, so we don't need more money in the future.
I completely agree with your sentiments. I think, I'm going to state the obvious here, what's so difficult about this is as you're maintaining and improving or fixing one thing, time goes on and something else pops, and then something else pops, so...
This isn't going to go...
It does. It's perpetual. This is perpetual care of two very large, important buildings, so, and, you know, we need to take it very seriously. You know, we'll pay more in the long run if we don't take it seriously now and try and deal with it as much as we can, so...
The only thing I wanted to mention, for those of you who have books, this is tab number six. And your capital plan is tab number eight, and then this will go with tab six. And you're a beautiful bunch of books.
Enjoy. I'm going to say again, because I appreciate not only the work and the beauty of the books, but they are very, very functional, and it makes a complex discussion, a very important discussion, much more digestible and understandable. So, I completely, I commend you for developing them and doing such a wonderful job with them. So, honestly, I agree with that. Okay, folks, do we want to talk about when we would meet again? Because I do think it needs to be an interim before March.
How soon can the request that we made about the budget be done? The timing should work around that, rather than get away from it. We have a school vacation coming up too, right?
We'll make it work.
Can I draw March one, which is a week ahead of when we're supposed to meet? I'm not around for every vacation that's...
I have a collaborative, that's meeting night, Pilgrim Mary Collaborative.
We can do it a different night. I was just going to Thursday, but... The twenty-eighth, we cannot do, because the skill is going to be previously in... I don't have it. She is busy.
Does he have the twenty-seventh?
Oh, the twenty-seventh, I'm sorry.
Twenty-second and twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Just meet here.
What about the twenty-second? Or is that school vacation?
That's school vacation.
We can come in.
No, we need us kind of committee members here this first. First is Halifax.
Yeah, exactly.
What's the twenty-sixth, Joy? What's the twenty-sixth, the week before?
That is...
Plington.
That's Plinton, and we use Plinton Finance. Are you from the Plinton Finance here, Lisa?
Yes.
Yeah, Eric, yeah. I'm sorry. I just, I just referenced you when I looked up. I am so sorry. Thank you for coming. Did you have any questions? I'll make whatever work, so, yeah. Yeah, the twenty-sixth is Plinton. I think we can do anything about that. We've got three meetings in a row that night.
What's twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh is possible.
This girl cannot be here on the twenty-seventh. I don't know how.
I would just need to take that. Where are we? Social hosting that night?
Ah.
That's at seven. If I could at least be there to introduce her, I can...
Yeah, because we start at six.
Okay, that's fine. I don't want to put too much...
Thank you. I appreciate it, but I...
That gives me a weird feeling if we're going to be talking about possible budget implications for her, her building and her programs, for her not to be here to speak to it, and I don't want her to feel rushed, to be at her other commitment as well, considering how important it is for her students and the families.
Question, I completely agree with you. Question, how early could we start?
Fair enough.
Five.
Five.
Is that acceptable to everyone, or is that a challenge?
I think five.
Five?
How much five?
I'll make it work for me, so...
Okay.
Twenty-seventh at five o'clock.
Thanks.
Let's do noon at...
Is that where you...
I'm sorry if my day job gets in the way of that.
No, really.
So, what was it? The twenty-seventh...
Twenty-seventh, twenty-five. That's a Tuesday?
Yeah, yes.
Twenty-seventh at five.
And that should comfortably get you to release the two, okay? But to make it easy on you, easier on you, I would suggest.
Yeah.
Yeah, great, folks, thanks for everybody's flexibility.
Meeting here?
Yes. Meeting here?
Yes.
I know, I'm here.
We're here.
Did I do something wrong?
We have a meeting here.
Just be over there. I think we're a little physical.
When did the coffee get there?
An hour ago? We...
When the robots came in.
Yeah. Official research.
We're done with the budgets.
Hey, 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 hey!
I don't know, we just, it's like a imposter brain.
They should have been pointed at.
And it looks like I...
Oh, no, you're here? It's a location, location, location!
Well, we got more to go.
Good luck.
It's not without her because she's been there a while.
All right, yeah, thank you for that.
Oh, really?
All righty, folks.
Oh!
All righty, folks. Our informal adjournment there for a few moments. Next, on to new business. Current upcoming committee vacancies. I just thought we should probably just take a moment and then, you know, kind of make sure the public knows that some people are coming up for jobs, obviously. Jim has left us. Laura was saying that Kingston's planning to meet a little bit later this month to appoint somebody to cover Jim's remaining tenure for that term. Then Kingston will have two openings, Jim's vacancy. And my understanding is Mark does not plan on running again.
The only way Jim would have a vacancy is if they only appointed him to the end of this year. I believe he just ran last year.
No, they'll just appoint him through the elections.
Okay, because when do we run it for the end of the term of the...
Right, so the, so the elected position is a, is a one-year term, which is the remainder of Jim's terms. So there's a three-year and a one-year.
So there'll be two openings in Kingston for Silver Lake. Mark, you, I'll let you speak for yourself.
As many of the committee know, I have a tough time balancing my professional career job in the afternoons and mornings with my duties here. I only foresee those responsibilities increasing come July 1, and it is not clear to members of this committee, or the students and parents and town that I serve, if I can not give 100% to this committee. So I am not running for reelection. That has been in the newspaper. I invite anybody who's interested to come in and find out what we do. And please run and serve your town, because it is a great experience.
It's a wonderful experience. Most nights.
And some mornings.
Yeah, and some mornings. Maureen, I'll let you speak for yourself if you'd like. I know you're, I believe you're planning on running again.
Yes, I spoke to our town clerk this week. She has the nomination papers ready, but the town hall is flooded. So she closed the office, but I'll be getting them Monday night, I hope.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to get it out there, because obviously, three openings on one school committed at the same time.
Can I pull papers for Mark?
Technically four, but let's say three, we've got new town clerk. Can you what?
Pull papers for Mark?
Yeah.
And we'll just fill him out when he's up.
I know, I know. Let's just hijack him, I can't...
I know his wife, but we can smooth it over.
Just include him in the warrant, he'll just sign it.
He's been so wonderful. And I wasn't going to go off on a tantrum, I will do this in the next couple of months, but you bring so much to the table as well. Your background and your experience is phenomenal.
Thanks.
Maybe so.
And congratulations.
All righty, quarry review.
I have some information on that. I had sent a copy of an MASC email that came to me, or came to everyone that gets the information, that a couple of districts have asked about making sure that we're meeting the requirements of the government for quarries. I had sent it to Paula and to Joy. And Joy has forwarded it to Fred with our current policy, which was 2015. And just asked that he take a look at it. And again, it's just something that, you know, if there's something out there that they changed and we need to do, you know, I don't want to be caught with it, especially with all the horrible things that go on with the children and adults in the news. So maybe we'll have something for that in April or so.
Yes. Fred's going to be here for the March meeting, our regularly scheduled March meeting. So we'll try and have that tackled then. Can I step back and ask, is the 27th a good date for our next... Okay, it did end up being fine. All right, I just want to be sure. All righty, old business, frequency of our meetings. Again, we talked about this in the union discussion, to see if we can space them out differently, do something different. Yeah, I don't know that we can make any decisions tonight. Again, I think that, as Maureen indicated, when the committee is back from, you know, elections, we have the committee that will be going forward next year. We should probably tackle that one at that point.
Would it make sense to sort of draft something out based on, you know... Well, it just seems like, you know, there's certain months where we have certain presentations and things, and just to kind of look at, well, here's what it looked like the last couple of years. You know, here's what January means, what February means, like... And then just kind of see if there... Because there may be a sort of a natural way to draft it up. Just have something to look at as opposed to, you know, starting in the fall and saying, okay, let's relook at it. You know, it might make sense to at least draft something now to look at.
I think that also makes a good point, because albeit giving the people who are going to be serving some voice in it, the people who've experienced it and been through it bring a lot to the table and can help mold that idea a little bit.
Right, but just something for us to look at, not to vote on, not to decide on. Just to kind of say, here's, here's what our yearly calendar has looked like. Here's what it could look like. You know, just, just as a place to start.
That's fine, we could check.
Well, we're a fanatic to read, get the budget, maybe?
Yeah.
Like I offered to do it, but I feel like I don't really know what's with the calendar as well enough yet, so...
It is on the list.
I ticked through my mind and I, nothing naturally comes out to me other than we usually skip the August meeting. And that's, that's like the one thing that we...
Buck Johnson from Halifax has tried several iterations of it, so it's sort of on my list to get to it, but...
Yeah, no, everything's priority, priority, so don't worry.
I'm trying to get the money out of districts first.
Reports of special committees. Kim, I realize it's been a lengthy discussion tonight. Obviously, you understand the whole budget process. And I appreciate you having patience and still being here.
So, I'm Kim Morat, for those who don't know me, but I think everybody left knows who I am. I'm the SLA president. And I was hoping to catch the ear of the finance committee, so I'm hoping that they watch this on television, because it's a message that I hold really close to my heart. We are talking about the budget, and I think the teachers should be heard in this conversation. I think that we are valuable, and I think that we have worked with the administration, with the committees and with the towns, trying to make a transparent understanding of what everyone's doing. And ultimately, we all have the same goal, which is to make Silver Lake the best school possible for our students. So thank you for all of the time that you've put in. And thank you for listening. I would make it shorter, but I actually wrote something tonight. I know this time of year is never easy, but I'm confident that everyone here wants what's best. Time and again, research has found that when schools have more money, they are able to give their students a better education. In addition, a study done by Rutgers University found that student success is linked to school funding. I know that's not a surprise to anyone here, or breaking news by any means. And I know that's easier said than done. But it's my hope that funding for Silver Lake will continue to enable it to be the amazing school district that I know it is. As I'm sure you're aware, and we've heard tonight, charter schools continue to be a challenge for public schools. For this reason, the SLA wants to work with the administration to keep kids at Silver Lake. I've talked to Marie on numerous occasions, and we are working close, well, we are going to when we both find time, work closely to bring in the new sub-separate program, because we understand as a union that this might mean that there are other demands on the teachers that don't fit into the contract that we have written. So we understand that we're going to work together to bring this into the school, because it's best for the school and the committee, and the community as a whole. We need to continue to offer classes and programs and opportunities to our students. But it's been difficult over the past few years, as more and more of our supplies are cut and fewer courses are offered due to a lack of enough teachers in each department, which means growing class size. I just kind of polled the teachers that were here. For instance, we have 27, 28, 30 kids in our classes right now, at the CP1 level. Because of this, we are often unable to offer all of the elective courses of the past that consistently garner student interest. This is the place where kids can go and dig in and find something beyond just the set curriculum that will light that spark to continue their education. Knowing this, charter schools often advertise programs that offer more specialized and diverse student-interest-driven programs. And we at the public level are left cutting these valuable programs. For instance, we talked about the art program here. Art club is all volunteer time. We had the robotics team here, and those kids are amazing. And I know Matt Melo said it's all the kids, but I'm going to give some credit to those teachers. They're all volunteer. There's no stipend. They work with the towns to get grants, and they donate their time in the summer to run a summer camp, and they take all of that money and they put it back into the students of Silver Lake. If we can't provide a better teaching environment for our teachers, our amazing ones who go above and beyond, which is the majority at our schools, we're going to start to lose them. And I don't want to see that happen. I understand, I remember John Klee, the people business. I know how budgets get cut. But you have to understand that the people in these buildings are special, and they're valuable, and no piece of technology is going to bring what the teachers bring to the classrooms every day. That love, that care, that support. We go above and beyond. Even tonight, we had the Latina No Chain Act. Again, volunteered by the teachers, working with the students to drive their passions. We're not paid, and we're not asking to be paid, but we need to have the supplies in order to continue to be our best in the classroom. While I firmly believe that Silver Lake's core academic classes are amazingly talented, and our teachers are unparalleled, and I'm biased as a product of Silver Lake and a teacher here, I do worry. This year, there's been a clear increase in directed study sizes. And even though many courses are offered in the catalog of study, not all classes can actually run. It's my hope that the committee and towns will work to fund the programs teachers and supplies needed to allow these schools to maintain and exceed its current commitment to excellence. But this will take money and funding. As teachers, we will continue to donate our time, our love and our passion to making Silver Lake the best it can be. But I fear that we simply will not be able to compete with the flashy advertising of charter schools competition if we are unable to fairly fund the means needed to continue being the innovative and high-achieving district that we are today. It's my hope that the committee, administration and communities understand that the SLA has worked to be proactive participant in budgeting. We make a consistent and concerted effort to educate ourselves about the issues affecting the schools. And we attend the school committees, late night, we're here, and we attend regularly. We encourage our in-district members to attend town meetings and be active in helping support the budget put forth by the school committee. We appreciate each and every one of you who dedicate so much of your time and efforts to helping Silver Lake, and we know that you are passionate. to helping Silver Lake, and we know that you are passionate supporters of this schools, and that we are all dedicated to the same goal of supporting the students of Silver Lake in their pursuit of academic success, and I do want to thank you all. I know there are going to be hard decisions made in the future, but don't kid yourself for one second that a number is not a person. Don't say we have to cut the budget and take somebody's face and somebody's place out of this school. You can't replace that. So don't forget when you're slashing those numbers, that there are teachers here who give passionately every day that you cannot get back, because you want to save a couple dollars here or there. There has to be a better way to continue. But, like, I know you guys are super supportive, so thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. Administrative review.
Oh, we've pretty much covered that. But I do, I will bring up again that after elections, we should have, schedule a meeting. I'll mention it to Mike about trying to set dates for the year that he requested.
CTE.
No meeting.
Chairman's correspondence. The correspondence that I've had was Charlie's. You all have a copy of it, and Charlie spoke at a high level to it. Legislative age on...
I'm gonna forego it. Chair, if you don't mind, I'll just send an update, and we can include it in the minutes for next week.
Wonderful, yeah, and your, your updates have been great.
I was just gonna say that, because updates have been fabulous.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you.
Negotiations.
We need a quick executive session.
Kat?
I attended my first meeting back last week. It was wonderful. Great to see a lot of new and familiar faces. The focus right now has been the fact that our executive director is retiring. They are interviewing the next few weeks and have been requested by the committee, the hiring committee, has been requested by the full board of directors to bring back at least two people to interview. The final interview phase will be April 5th, where I'm looking, I haven't, I'm not on the hiring committee, so it's, Madefekri is on it. They have currently, I believe, as of last week, they had six applicants, so the deadline for that is coming soon, and they, once they get them, the first interview date is actually February 27th, so we'll see what happens.
Thank you. Policy.
That's me.
Yeah.
Sorry, double duty. We have actually finished, I'm happy to report, we finished on Monday night, so before us, we have first readings of, I'm gonna do Jason here, policies ACE, EB, EEA, EAA, GBGE, GBGF, IK, JII, JJH-R, JLCC, JLCD, JQ, KBVA, KCD, KE, KHB, and LVA. We also have deleted ones. We're gonna go more, okay?
Okay.
Deleted ones based on MAC, MASC recommendations, including DJG, IHAE, IJJ, IJM, JBA, JICJ, JRA-R. Maureen?
I move that we approve the first readings that Mark read us and approve the deleted policies recommended by MASC.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Thank you.
We should bring the final ones to the March meeting for the first readings.
Do you have to weigh the official reading of the...
I move that we weigh the official reading of the policies as for matches.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, revolving funds, no meeting. SAFER.
I just have a couple of things that I wanted to clarify. At our last SSF, SFA, SAFER, SFA meeting, we talked about when the polls were coming down, and I just wondered if we had a date on that.
I don't believe we actually do yet. I know we have a contractor, and I don't know that there's a date scheduled that I'm aware of. I'm not sure if it's weather-related or if it's a scheduling issue.
The reason that I ask is because the quote that we got him, from him, unless we've already contracted him, is, was only good for 30 days, and the date on the quote was January 10th. So I just want to verify that, that we're still good with that.
We, we contracted with them, they just haven't physically come.
Okay, great. And then the second question I had was to make sure that we're on schedule with the wastewater treatment plant repairs that we were gonna do over February vacation.
It's been ordered.
And that's all been ordered and everything?
Yes.
It was ordered the next morning, I think it was.
Perfect. Cause we're not getting, I'm not getting any updates, so that's why I'm asking. And then, of course, just to make sure everyone knows that on March 8th, which I assume we'll do it at 5:00, since we're meeting here at 6, or we're, we're meeting for the full committee at, at 6, we'll have a, a meeting and Mark will be back.
Thank you.
Thank you. School start times. Jill and I have gone back and forth on email. We decided that we're gonna wait until after February vacation, after we vote the budget, and then figure out where we're going.
Treasurers' report.
So thank you, everybody, for getting the warrants done. There was 15 regular warrants circulating the table tonight for a total of $997,978.19. There was also two payroll warrants circulating the table for $1,495,915.75, for a grand total of $2,493,892.94.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Unit 31, obviously, we had a meeting right before this one. Okay, future dates to remember, February 16th and service day. I didn't know about that. Winter vacation, the 19th and the 23rd, and then our next regularly scheduled meeting, as indicated, March 8th. Could I have a motion to adjourn and go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Well, Maureen?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And Eric, to myself, yes. Thank you, folks, it's been a long night. I appreciate everybody's input.